Hey Kelly, how you been?
What's up?
Well, not heck much. Not just too much.
Good.
Weather's cooling off a bit, which is nice, I know. This is the spring we're supposed to have. Is this the thing with their parking lot drainage? At the church? Yeah, Danny says he's been talking to Polhar about it already. It's, it's all on their parking lot, not necessarily the street. How you been? Oh, where you going? Oh, fishing or something, or? Okay, pretty cool. How long do you go for? You're doing trains, so I'm thinking a week at least? Oh, it's a whole thing? I've never really traveled by train, so I don't know. It'll be very regimented. Hey Tommy, did you see my email on Tuesday, or on, for Friday if you're interested in showing up to that, or? The thing at Chamblin's? Uh, ten AM on Friday. There's a kickoff meeting for, I know you had a lot of questions, which are fair, but if you wanted to go, because that way I'm not the only one in the room that's worried about the price tag. Okay, well, I sent an email today. If you're interested, let me know. I wish my brother lived in town, that'd be great.
They're nice, they're good. They don't last very long. They always break off right alongside the back, by the way.
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order?
Augubright?
Here.
Cullenin?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Bude, Zappson, Rivara?
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got one commissioner that's absent tonight, he's homesick, uh, and as well as our attorney. I need a motion of second to approve the minutes of the May second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Rivara?
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only?
My name is Kathy Frederick. I would like to address number nine. I feel that it's being ignored to give us a parking lot on the east end of Oglesby, and I understand everybody on the east end does pay taxes in this city. Now, if you look throughout the city, across from City Hall is a public parking place that accommodates the businesses up there. If you look across here from City Hall, we have almost a double parking lot that accommodates the businesses here. When you go down to Bulldogs, you have a, an beauty shop coming in, you have the antique mall, you have an axe throwing business coming in. Across the street, you have Bulldogs, Franklin's Barber Shop, Shields, the laundromat, whoever is coming into Gary Corliss's building, and you have Claudettes. Plus, you have residential and apartments. All the businesses and the people in that street have just that block, block and a half if you measure it probably, that have to park in those areas. And I personally was told, and so have other people in this city, not to worry about it. It's gonna be a parking lot. I was told that myself by Mayor Rivara, when I spoke to him on several occasions about it. Other people were told that by him. Don't worry about it, when they questioned him. It's gonna be a parking lot. Well, now, it doesn't look like it's gonna be a parking lot. And I realize the city has to make money, but they also have to treat all of the citizens equally. From Bulldogs down the east end, we have nothing that we can say the city gave us to use for parking. There's nothing down there, and there are quite a few businesses. You get a busy day when Donnie Shields has a great big funeral. He takes the whole block, which I can understand. He has a service to perform, but where does that leave the other businesses in the area? It leaves them out in the cold. And I just want you guys to consider that we are citizens on the east end too, not just the west end up. And the businesses the west end up are always treated well, and the businesses down? I would like to, you know, see them get treated equally, and the citizens down that way too. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Afternoon gentlemen and ladies, um, I'm a new business in town, and I was axe throwing, that's going into the lot down there, and everybody's probably aware of it. When I took the lease on that property, I was under the impression that also that was supposed to be a parking lot. Um, at maximum capacity, we're gonna have fifty to seventy people with ten to fifteen vehicles adding to the already congestion down at that end. I don't know where they park. There's not a lot of parking down there. I mean, just us doing the construction on, coming on the weekends with, with a little bit of traffic, and it's not even busy yet in the summer, there's already limited spacing. I think it'd benefit, I know me especially, but I mean, other venues that are down there, especially with the other restaurants and and bars that are down there, and other businesses that are opening up. I heard that Cortelino's, the bar there is gonna, next to Cortelino's is opening back up, which is gonna add more congestion to that street. I mean, I don't know how it'd benefit not to have it as a parking lot to benefit everybody in town and the traffic flow.
Thank you. Could I state your name though, for the record, please?
Charles Cusick.
Further public comments, we'll move on. Approved bills is presented for payment?
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Aye. Next number seven is, uh, to approve one one nine four dash zero five one six two two, an ordinance modifying the terms of employment for the Oglesby Chief of Police. At this time, since Terry's not here, I would move that we would table it to the next meeting.
I will make a motion to table ordinance one one nine six zero five one six two two, an ordinance modifying the terms of employment for the Oglesby Chief of Police.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Rivara?
Aye. Approved facade application recommended by the facade committee.
You know, when I first saw this on the, the agenda, um, I, I was a little nervous because I didn't, we didn't talk about, uh, the plans for the facade stuff, really, except from last year, we said we're gonna give out a hundred thousand for it, set aside. And one of the things I was hoping to modify on there is, we've done a great job with businesses that are already in town, but we haven't done a whole lot for, for businesses that haven't come here yet. So I wanted to see if we could talk about that probably in the future, but when I opened up the packet and I saw what it was for, it's actually for a business that doesn't exist already in town. So, it kinda makes that point moot. I think it's fantastic. So I don't have an issue with that, but I do think, um, at some point in time in the future, we need probably have a sit down and talk about if we should separate out, uh, the differences between businesses that are already established and businesses that don't already exist in town. But, other than that, I got no problems with it at all.
I need a motion of second to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the facade application recommendation from the facade committee.
Second.
Augubright?
I'm staying.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Rivara?
Aye.
Approve authorizing the listing of property located at two forty-six East Walnut Street, Oglesby, for the sale as B one downtown commercial property. We've already heard from Kathy Frederick, um, and from Charles. I'm not gonna try the last name. On it, um, discussion, motion?
I, I appreciate the comments that we heard there. Um, first time meeting, Mr. Cusick, I'm excited to hear about a new business coming into town. Uh, the earlier comments though about the parking lot, some of that logic I find to be a little flawed. For example, we have a lot of empty businesses in Oglesby right now, right? We're trying to revamp them, bring them back and things like that. So if I were to go back thirty or forty or fifty years ago, because I see pictures all the time, people putting up on things on Facebook, fantastic. My question was, when every single block had a business then, why was parking got an issue there? The fact that now there's less people there, now parking's a bigger issue, I don't also believe in the, uh, the argument of the Shields Funeral Home, a, a parking lot that's gonna fit twelve to sixteen cars is not gonna solve that in itself. Um, I do think a parking lot would be a great idea, but all I'm saying is, giving it forty-five days to see if there's something even out there worth, um, is worth the wait. That's my only sense, two cents on it.
I think part of the problem that, that, uh, complicates it is that there, there are some rental units at that end of town. People don't have a lot of places to park, and consequently, they end up parking on the street, which takes away from the, from the businesses. And Kathy's right, I'm not opposed to a, uh, to a parking lot down there. I understand people, if you're gonna have customers, you're gonna run a business, um, they need a place to park. They're not gonna walk two blocks. I also understand some of the councils here is saying that, hey, we got a piece of property. Let's put it up for sale and see if anybody's interested to, uh, in, in investing in, in bringing another business into Oglesby. My understanding on, on this, if, if this is authorized to be put up for sale, that the city of Oglesby has the right to refuse any and all bids for the property.
And for any reason, my understanding.
Correct.
So if something, unless something comes in that's just absolutely glowing and perfect, I would probably say that's what we should do is reject the bids and kinda go from there.
And so, I was gonna be hypothetical here. So what's the listing price gonna be, and are we hiring a realtor for this? Are we just putting a sign up? What? What is the game plan? Because personally, I'm, I'm still think the parking lot's probably the best, but when we got that building appraised, the appraiser pretty much told us downtown, he said, what we are putting into it, if we're lucky to appraise for that much, we should be happy. And so, if I built a new building, there's no way my new building would ever appraise for what I have to put into it to build that downtown currently. And that's number one reason I'm bringing it all up, because he literally told us that, we got that appraised less than a month ago.
I, I, I agree. So my, my only argument is, is if forty-five days go by and there's not something that's absolutely perfect, then we've said, then we can say we've done everything we can to turn that into something else, and if not, then it becomes a parking lot.
Okay.
That's my, I don't think forty-five days is too much a harm to ask, I think.
So on day forty-six, are we gonna start paving, or doing whatever two?
Well, I, I think we'd have to, I think that'd appease everyone here, is why I'm asking. Well, I think what, what what will happen, we, this way we'd satisfy two things. One is, while you could've got all this money for this lot and this big business coming in, that satisfies that question. The second part of that is, on the, I, I don't wanna say the forty-sixth day, but within a, a short period of time, we need to, uh, have a plan, uh, because we're gonna have to square off the property, uh, with the people in that, and, um, develop a plan on what kind of a, uh, parking lot that we're gonna be able to put in down there. If I recall, uh, the engineers, what is that gonna be? About eighteen spots? If I'm somewhere in that area?
Somewhere in there.
I think it's more twelve to sixteen.
Twelve to sixteen is what I had written down.
I, I can't.
Twelve to sixteen, he said.
Twelve to sixteen?
Mayor, I, I didn't come to comment on this, but can I give you a little bit of information?
You certainly may, sir. Even with your new jeans.
George Cullenin, and all I wanna tell you is this, I moved to Oglesby in seventy-nine. My life, wife lived here all her life. I was on the police department from eighty to ninety. I ran for office, I got on office. Okay, it's not a matter of the parking place. And the new people out here might not know this, Kathy does, it's a matter of east and it's a matter of west. And the people on the east side of town always felt they did not get treated equally. I, I that, that's a fact. And the parking lot is not so much a, it is a necessity, I believe. With the funeral home, you got, you got the Mexican restaurant, you have, uh, Bulldogs, you got places like that, but it's a, it's a matter of principle. Just to, just to cut you short on this thing before you get into a civil war, it's an east-west thing. It's got nothing to do with economics. And
I understand what you're saying.
When you make your decision, I, I would bring that in, because from nineteen eighty, all I heard was, everything goes west of Dale Street. Nothing comes down here. And I don't live down there, I don't live on the east side, so I don't have a, any skin in the game. But I just wanna let you know what's gonna be coming at you on this issue. It's, it's not economics, it's a matter of principle with them.
We, you, you're, you're absolutely right.
What's that?
I said, you're absolutely right. We got, we got people on one side that
Exactly.
that, that want a parking lot. We got people on the other side that said, hey, we're gonna get all this megabucks if we put it up for sale.
I don't have any reason
And maybe this is a, a way to settle the thing, move on and get it done.
I've heard it, I've heard it for ten years on the police department, I heard it for four years on the council, and I just wanna I don't want the same rhetoric going towards you on that.
Thank you, George.
I know we had a lot of tribes and teams out there, that's kinda the American way right now. I hope we don't have a division in Oglesby between the east and west side of town. I hope that's not the case, but but yeah, I would agree, Tommy, with like what you said, on day forty-six or whenever the next meeting is, either we're looking at what bid options were, uh, or, or probably see if we can put some engineering agreement to get, to put the, uh, get it surveyed and see what we gotta do to turn it into a parking lot. That's what I'd say.
If we get an offer more than a dollar, I will be absolutely blown away. I'll also tell you guys that, so.
But, you know, I mean, then
Literally, a dollar.
But even by doing that, don't we serve our fiduciary responsibility by finding that answer out?
I still think we did when we announced this, how many ever days ago, say we're looking for something. It was in the paper, it was all over.
Did it go in the paper? Did we put, did we put something in the paper?
Tom, you're on the spot.
As a news article? Not a published thing for
Yeah, I mean, it was covered. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say this, publishing it as an, as an article for actual sale serves that purpose. That's just my two cents though.
Look at me, I'm not involved in this operation.
Yeah, we'll be.
I'll make a motion to approve one one nine seven dash zero five one six two two, an ordinance authorizing the listing of the property located at two forty-six East Walnut Street, Oglesby, Illinois, for the sale as B one downtown commercial property.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Move on. We made a commitment to the police department, uh, at our last working meeting, we need to approve the purchase of a squad car for the Oglesby Police Department.
I will make a motion to approve purchase of a squad car for the Oglesby Police Department.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Rivara?
Aye. Approve and set IMEA electric efficiency, efficiency program usage for the year twenty twenty-two.
So, uh, every year, w- we've been getting, uh, we get a certain amount of money set aside that we can improve our electrical efficiency. Last year was the first year that we offered it up, uh, for some of that money to be part of the businesses as well. It was sixteen thousand dollars, we offered up seven thousand for that. We did have three people take out applications, only one business actually put in for it. Uh, but then when it came time for how much they would actually get out of it, they decided not to do it. I think people, I think maybe, I hope I didn't cause part of that issue, um, I think in the past I've explained that the city gets about fifty percent efficiency out of it, because our old city lights are so inefficient, we can maximize and get up to fifty percent. So like if you have a business that has fluorescent lights and you put in a, a new high efficiency and you only have a twenty-two percent increase in efficiency, they only give you twenty-two percent of that. So I think that business might've been a little upset that they didn't get as much as they were expecting. But, what I'm recommending is, because there is an extra two thousand dollars this year, it's eighteen thousand, I'd recommend we set aside eight thousand for that. And if it's not used within ninety days, the city will use all of it for our lighting program anyways. Anybody have any questions, concerns about that?
No, the, uh, for every light that we replace up there, we, we save forty percent in energy cost for that light. And it comes to a multitude of dollars.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve and set the IMEA electrical efficiency program usages for year twenty twenty-two, setting aside eight thousand dollars for business use.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Rivara?
Aye. Next is discuss centralizing the city's supply purchases.
Terry's gone?
Why don't we just table it till Terry's here next time?
I'll make a motion to table discussing centralizing the city's supply purchases.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Aye. Old business.
The only old business one I have is from our last working meeting. Um, I, my understanding is the IMEA, some of the gentlemen showed up today talking about the load shedding. I know some people want to review those as well. We don't have to talk about it here today or necessarily, but I would like to get that approved of how, what we wanna put out to people as soon as possible. Not that I'm expecting any issues this summer, but it'd be terrible if all of a sudden there was a heat related issue, uh, if something came up this summer and we didn't do our part and now people are not aware why their power might be cut off or something. So, something to think about. I'd love to see if I can get it on the agenda for final approval next meeting.
Public comments? Commissioner reports. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, one more time again. Uh, Charles Cusick, I'm inquiring about the last meeting that I attended, the concern, uh, the change in the, uh, zoning for the axe throwing, where that is currently at? If that has been published yet or not, or if that is even on the table for that?
The, um, I can't answer the question, the attorney isn't here.
I think we voted to have it go, referred to the plan commission, but I don't know if
Replanning commission?
But I think what happened was, the night we did that, there was a plan commission meeting thirty minutes prior, so they haven't had a new meeting yet, I think. I think that's, if I remember right.
We're on, we're on track to get it done.
Okay, do we have, would possibly have an ETA on it, or would it
Pardon?
Would you possibly have an ETA? The reason of my concern is, we're trying to hope to be open for the Oglesby Fest, which is June, but that's a month away.
It's about, it's about five or six weeks.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll be on track to get it done, but that's too, that's too close to me, it should be, should be.
If, if you're, if you're looking, if you're looking to bring, I think it's exciting. If you're, I'm glad to meet you. Uh, if, if you need to get it in here that soon and we need to do something, if we have to do a special meeting, I'd say we do it.
Yeah, we were just looking, we were looking at it to coincide, because we're gonna be at the festival with our mobile trailer, which we have, and with that, we were going to try and coincide with the actual fixed location. So anybody that went to the mobile trailer and, and tried it, they had interned for the entire weekend, they would be, get a gift certificate to come and, and come and try it and actually apply it. So they wouldn't lose anything and they could actually try the fixed location and, and get more of an opportunity to do something.
I know our attorney's not here, but I know when it comes to like zoning things, when you make modifications, there's specific rules, we, I don't think we can just
No.
change them that quickly. I think it has to be like published.
I, I, I believe we can. I'm sure we got your phone number.
Yeah.
So, give me, give me twenty-four hours or whatever a day and I'll make
Okay.
have it all squared away for you.
Alright, appreciate it, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, George Cullenin. Hey, I wanna know about Comcast, if you got a second. I, I'm not gonna drag this out. I just wanna know, the city collects a very small stipend I just wanna know, the city collects a very small stipend of a tax. Do they have any input with Comcast as to complaints? Every time I call out there, I don't have any luck with getting somebody that understands what I'm talking about. And like, five years ago, I quit watching sports. In order to get what I got, I had to buy twenty-two sports channels. And I got duplicates, I got triplicates. They got a very screwy way of doing business. It's good for them, it's not good for us. And I didn't know if I could get, sit in with a meeting, if the city has representation with them, or what.
I think we're to get as frustrated as you do, trying to do business with them.
Yeah.
Let me see what I can do, George, to get a representative here. We have. We have, I've got a number to call, let me see what I can get arranged.
Yeah, their service people are great.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
It's just, it's just how they stack your purchases.
I understand what you're saying, I've gone through the same damn thing.
Okay. Yeah, if you would.
I will do that.
Alright, thank you.
Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Cullen?
Yeah, I'm just gonna let you know that the LP Cavaliers are gonna be hosting the IHSA baseball tournaments, May twenty-fifth, Wednesday, at the Ball Diamond. And the championship game will be played on the twenty-eighth, Saturday to the twenty-eighth. That's all I have.
Alright, the only real important thing I got is that the hydrant flushing will be going on from thirty-one May to three June. I don't have anything specific for the electric department right now, but I will say that there is a lot of little things going on behind the scenes. For example, our second feed plans with ambulance engineers are going on right now. Solar site plans are being developed. We're in talks, multiple different talks, about EV charging stations in the downtown area. We just talked about the Electrical Efficiency Program, and also with the load shedding, we're gonna be talking about opening up a cooling center for City Hall in the future here. So a lot of little things to come down the pipe, that's all I got.
I've got a couple things, and actually, this first part is for Terry. Unfortunate, there was an accident with our ambulance, there are jolly out on a transfer Saturday. We have an injured EMT. Hopefully, he will be released from the hospital by tomorrow. The ambulance is totaled, they were in a construction zone and were hit from behind by a box truck. The driver of the box truck was issued seven tickets. We have received several complaints about golf carts that do not have the proper stickers, no registration, you will be ticketed. Dirt bikes and et cetera that are on city streets that are not licensed and a danger to the public will be cited. Fun Fest is about five weeks out, we need volunteers, buy fifty-fifty tickets if we are going to reach our goals. This is a family-friendly event, we need your help and everyone working together to make it success. I wanna thank GTI for their donation of a thousand dollars toward the purchase of a thermal imaging camera. I wanna thank the American Legion for the colored guard, for the mayor's baseball parade. We recognize and congratulate the great school athletes from Foley Family, who did very well at the state track meet. We kinda get hit sometimes that we're not doing enough with abandoned properties. Seen an email today, we finally, looks like we're gonna get the one resolved south of town. We got two, one's on Florence and another one on North Columbia. When these things get tied up in a state and there's no money, it gets to be a nightmare to try to get in there and fix it. It just takes ever too long, and it's a slow process. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Rivara.
Aye.